Car accident on Ninety-Five, and I happened to get stuck right where I couldn't get off. And I just, you know, as frustrating as that can be for all of us and everyone that was late to wherever they were going, everything in their life seemed so important, but I just pray that those people are okay. Because instinctively, I just wanted to get out of my car and run up there and help because I knew it just happened, and I saw the emergency vehicles weren't even there yet, so I just hope, um, I hope they're okay. So, anyway, moving on, we'll move on to our minutes for approval.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And, all right, I'm gonna do my resolutions real quickly, and I appreciate everybody's patience. So, first, we're gonna do Manufacturing Month. Julie? I'm gonna read the resolution, and if you could, just say a couple words when you're done. Whereas the Manufacturers Association of Florida Space Coast, M.A.S.C., is an initiative of the Economic Development Commission of Florida Space Coast that seeks to promote manufacturing through Maiden Brevard, a joint program of the EDC Cocoa Beach Regional Chamber of Commerce, Melbourne Regional Chamber of Commerce of East Central Florida, the Greater Palm Bay Chamber of Commerce, and the Titusville Area Chamber of Commerce. And whereas Maiden Brevard is focused on promoting and celebrating companies that manufacture products in Brevard County, Florida, and changing the perception of manufacturing careers through the EDC's Talent Asset Pipeline Program. And whereas Maiden Brevard seeks to educate manufacturers, raise awareness about manufacturing careers, enable platforms for certified skill development, and enhance manufacturing job placement. And whereas the state of Florida recognizes the month of October as Manufacturing Month as an effective way to expand knowledge about the value manufacturing brings to Florida's economy, and to showcase the high-skilled, high-paid manufacturing jobs needed by the industry. And whereas Manufacturing Day is a national grassroots movement occurring on the first Friday of October. And whereas during Manufacturing Day and Manufacturing Month, U.S. manufacturers open their doors to showcase modern manufacturing and foster interest in manufacturing careers. And whereas Maiden Brevard through M.A.S.C. is encouraging more than 500 manufacturers in Brevard County, Florida, partner organizations and schools to participate in Manufacturing Month. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaims October 2019 as Manufacturing Month, and recognizes Maiden Brevard as a partnership of the EDC and the four area chambers of commerce and the many dedicated local manufacturers. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this twenty-two day, 22nd day of October 2019. Can I get a motion?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. On behalf of over 500 manufacturers in Brevard County, and we have some leaders here that are also supporting our manufacturing industry, and we have a short video to show.
All service graphics, manufacturers, custom printed products for business, made right here in Melbourne on the Space Coast of Florida.
Here at Jocelli Labs, we produce quality hi-fi audio products, and we're made here in Brevard.
Hi, I'm Scott Lewitt, President of Structural Composites and Compsons, and you're looking at our composite preforms that are used in boats and semi-trailers throughout the industry, throughout the U.S. And so, we're in about 20 percent of the boats in the country, and these products are made in Brevard.
I'm Sal Bolonia, and I'm the President of Helical Communication Technologies. We design and build deployable antennas for small satellites, and it is made in Brevard.
Do you want jump-powered race cars? Larson Motors provides them from concept, design, fully engineered, and operated. They're made here on Florida Space Coast.
At Embraer, we assemble the Phenom family of business jets, including the best-selling light jet in the world, the Phenom 300, and the most disruptive and technologically advanced mid-size and super-mid-size business jets, the Paraders.
All made here on Florida Space Coast.
Hi, my name is Tim, and I enjoy working here at Centennial. Every day, we make a difference in people's lives. Our mission is to enable the healthier lives by improving the avoidance, detection, and treatment of cancer.
Wind turbines, radon detectors, medical devices, test tubes, and countless other technical innovations that don't fit the typical box are counting on DRB packaging for our custom packaging solutions that are made here in Rockledge on Florida Space Coast.
I am Jason Jones of Century View Systems. Our mobile detection platforms assist in providing early threat detection during large events to keep attendees safe, and they're made here in Brevard County, Florida.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. I think there's something up with the mics. I'm not sure. The lectern mic is echoing. You wanna try it again?
I just, I just wanted to thank you very much for taking the time to have this resolution for this.
Would you mind introducing who's here? I've been, that's been my trend lately, because you have a lot of people here that are pretty important in our community.
Okay. Elizabeth, hi, with the EDC. Nancy Platon with the President of Palm Bay Chamber. Marcia Gadke with Titusville. Dennis Folesky with Brevard County Schools. Rob Sloanan with FIT. Patty Boatman with Eastern Florida State. Lori Robinson with Career Source Brevard.
Lauren Rawlings.
Pardon?
Lauren Rawlings.
Lauren Rawlings. She is with the Melbourne Chamber. And Joe Mayer with Lockheed Martin, also the Chair of the EDC.
Thank you. And the reason why I do that is because I want people to know how important and how impactful manufacturing is in the community, and I thank you so much for-
We have the most on the Space Coast.
Yes. Thank you. All right. All right, Celia Keen?
Yeah? We have a big room.
Come on up.
She's not kidding. That is a big room.
I won't make you introduce everybody, because that's too many.
Thank you.
And that would be a test of your memory, to know everybody's first and last names.
I would not pass.
Maybe you can just mention the organizations if you could. I'll read this, and you can tell us a little bit about what you guys do and different organizations that are involved. Thank you. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security, and humanity due to an abuser's systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control. And whereas 3,978 domestic violence offenses were reported to law enforcement in Brevard County in 2018, and of those, four victims were killed. And whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people and are supported by societies and societal indifference. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole here in Brevard County and throughout the United States and the world. And whereas all citizens of Brevard, government officials, law enforcement agencies, healthcare providers, domestic violence programs, social service providers, educators, clergy, and community leaders must join together to end the abuse and violence that continues to threaten the health, safety, and well-being of so many in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Together with the Brevard County Domestic Violence Task Force, we urge citizens to speak out against domestic violence, support survivors' efforts to live free from abuse, and hold those abuse, abusers accountable. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session this 22nd day of October, A.D., 2019.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lober.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. What you see before you are representatives from law enforcement, counseling centers like the Women's Center, shelters in the community, state attorney's office, am I leaving anybody out? Private counseling, Batters Intervention Program. During the month of October, the Brevard County Domestic Violence Task Force joins communities across the nation to recognize the seriousness of domestic violence and to honor those who have been affected by violence. The mission of the Brevard County Domestic Violence Task Force is to address issues related to domestic violence in this county by raising awareness while preserving the rights of the victims. We appreciate the support of the Brevard County Commissioners for those affected by domestic violence and the agencies that assist families and individuals. We invite and encourage everyone to speak out against domestic violence, support survivors' efforts to live free from abuse, and hold those who abuse accountable. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you so much for all you do. Thank you.
(inaudible)
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 Questions for Mr. Stewart? Okay.
Thank you.
I guess we'll call you back up if we do.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, my gosh. All right. Jonathan Johnson?
Good morning. Jonathan Johnson with Hop and Green and Sam's also on behalf of Miami Corp. I just wanted to make one additional point to follow up on Glenn's comments. This is really about less government, with all due respect, and that's what we're trying to do here because the alternative, if you look at the villages, if you look at a number of other successful real estate projects on a large scale, is the use of multiple community development districts phased over time. So, a number of other communities such as Vieira, Lakewood Ranch, Ave Maria, the West Villages, all very successful projects, have utilized a stewardship district mechanism to have one district. So, one elected board, one place for the county to engage, one place for the environmental agencies to engage, so we'll have one unit of government over the 63,000 acres as opposed to a staging of multiple CDDs, which at 1,000 acres a pop ends up with a lot of people who have their hands in the management and stewardship of this community. So, for all of those reasons, we're asking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in support of this. Before Vieira was created, we're out here, this is all empty land, and people moved in knowing that this assessment was already on it to make it a spectacular, beautiful place. I get people frustrated all the time saying, "You're spending all the money in Vieira." No, the people that live in Vieira are spending all the money in Vieira. Same with this area. It's not developed yet, and I got to tell you, working with Miami Corporation through the years for the water that we've gotten, they've just been wonderful, excellent corporation to work with. This is a quality group of people coming in. There is no development out here. When you guys fixed up the 5A property out there off of Scottsmore, it was a total mess. And it's, I have Scottsmore people and people at North End just saying what a remarkable job that's starting to develop right there. It's just north of them, and you're bringing in a whole city atmosphere, and my community is very excited about this. And it's not costing us any money. It's going to cost you all the money. And when people move in, they already know this assessment's there. It's up to them. You know, they don't have to live there, but most people are drawn to these types of areas because of how beautifully they're maintained, and you're not incorporating. So, it's going to be still tax-based for Brevard County, but it's going to be a very nice community. You're bringing in industry and housing. I've seen the blueprints, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity for people to live in a place where they'd like to live. So, I'm in support of this. And staff did a lot of work with you. There's a few things they had to fix through, and you guys really worked it and came to a good consensus. So, I'm supporting this.
Commissioner Loeb?
I view this sort of in the same sense that I view COA fees or HOA fees. If someone doesn't want to pay them, they don't have to pay them. They just don't buy the land there. This is Miami's land, not the city, but the corporation, and if they want to do something with their land that's not going to impact people off their land, by all means, everything that I look at when it comes to zoning or anything really pertaining to property, I look at it and say, "Well, who owns the land, and what's the impact, if any, on the adjacent and nearby property owners?" If there's no impact on the nearby or adjacent property owners, or a miniscule impact, or beneficial impact, do what you want to do. It's your property. So, I respect Commissioner Tobias' opinion. I don't share it. Again, I would just equate this to being equivalent to a COA or an HOA set of dues. If you don't want to pay for it, I respect that. You shouldn't have to, but then don't buy there.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Tobias has a motion to reject on the floor, and Commissioner Tobias' light's on. That's all right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe I didn't do so well explaining this, and that's my bad. With your indulgence, may I please ask a couple, because I threw out some stuff there that probably, like I said, I didn't do so well. Can I ask staff a couple of questions, Madam Chair?
Sure.
And this would be for Ms. Bentley. How long would this district last? Is there an expiration date?
It does not have an expiration date. However, it could be terminated, dissolved, or become inactive under its terms
Okay.
of the proposed legislation.
Okay. So, my question is, if any of those things happen, who would be on the hook for the maintenance of the infrastructure there? Would it be those individuals, or since it's in county land, it would then be spread across all taxpayers in Brevard County?
The proposed legislation is silent. The letter does indicate that the applicant and the county have agreed that nothing in the act requires the county to accept infrastructure. So, I think it would become a question at the time, who would take over?
So, while it may not have any impact on us, certainly, while there may be some successful stewardship districts currently, you mentioned the villages. The villages is in some turmoil right now, quite a bit of turmoil, if you believe the papers. This is a burden that eventually, by our own staff's opinion, could be very costly for future commissions. So, I'm going to continue to not support this.
Commissioner Loeb?
I see you kind of wiggling over there, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond. So, what would your response be with respect to that?
Two-fold. First of all, the villages was an example of how not to do it, where you have multiple districts. What we're trying to do is create a single district. Secondly, it's very important to understand that you have absolute control and power. So, when the permitting comes in for the roads and the designs for the roads and everything else, you actually create the determination then as to how those roads are accepted. For instance, each road could have a requirement that if the CDD, I'm sorry, the stewardship builds it, it would have to maintain it. It could also have a requirement that, it could be a private road. It could have a requirement that if the CDD ceases for some reason, which I don't think it would because it has a funding mechanism, a perpetual funding mechanism. I don't see that as a problem, but if it does, you could have a provision that says that the POA or the HOA could be required to do this. There's lots of ways to do this. You do that at the time the road is permitted. You do that at the time the design is brought in. Right now, this is just starting the process for the financial mechanism to allow us to go through this process. And again, you're looking at about 11,000 acres in Brevard. Most of this stewardship is in Volusia and Edgewater. But this is important for us to be able to do this all at the same time.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias to reject the item. Do I have a second? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Make a motion to approve, Madam Chair?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Loeb. And I'll just comment that, I mean, I don't know how many times we've met over this, what your plans are for out there, and I think, if anything, and I think Commissioner Loeb hit the nail on the head, it's a property rights issue. I think that, you know, you having that large-scale development that you guys are opting to tax yourselves, so it doesn't impact us, no matter how you say it or spend it. So, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes 4-1.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item F-11, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. I think this item's a good item to approve, except they're starting at 7:30, and I would like to move the time to 8 o'clock, just because it's Sunday morning. I've had that request from residents, so I'd like to approve this item with tweaking the time from 7:30 is the start time, Sunday morning, to 8 o'clock.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to move the time to 8 o'clock in the morning.
Yes, ma'am.
And a second by Commissioner Loeb. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Moving on to public comments. Got a head public comment card up here.
I believe you do. Yeah, I saw one from Mr. Pritchett.
I think it got discombobulated when we were moving stuff around.
Okay. Out of the drop? Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Tovey? Charles Tovey?
Who was it?
I'll go to the second. There's three cards, so then I'll swing back around to them. Peter Carnisdale?
I would like to thank the people here for allowing me the time to talk for a minute. Basically, the first thing I'd like to do is make sure that everybody realizes that I represent myself and nothing more than that. There seems to have been some perception that that was not true. Then I would like to go on and thank Commissioner Smith for meeting with the IRCUC management, which he arranged for and did. And at that meeting, I believe, they agreed to do a new traffic study. I have a couple of comments in reference to that traffic study. It relates to the Brevard, the right-hand turn lane again with the IRC entrance. I suggest basically adjusting the timing on the new traffic study from December, January to the January, February timeframe because of the reduction in traffic due to schools' closings and holidays, vacations, and residents movement and all that kind of stuff that would happen during the holiday period. The other thing basically is to include the possible traffic light in the same intersection for different reasons. This one is basically IRC is on one side, Heron's Landing is on the other side. The traffic study would just include the basic traffic patterns, but there's a bus stop, there's the closeness of the sidewalks to IRC seat into Vieira Boulevard, and the golf carts and the bicycles and the pedestrians are all along there, which create the cars to have to stop before they make the turn. And that was not considered within the traffic study that was done initially. And there's also pedestrians crossing Vieira Boulevard from Heron's Landing to get to the bus stop, which is on the side of Vieira Boulevard. And I don't believe that was incorporated into the original plan. So, I would hope that that would represent, take care of that. And basically, that's the only changes that I would kind of recommend in terms of that. And I would like to, again, thank Commissioner Smith for meeting with us, first meeting with me and then meeting with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Moya?
Good morning. Make this quick. Couple meetings, Bruce Moya with Melbourne, Florida. Couple meetings ago, I came here. It was a very contentious meeting. A lot of people come here, and I let my emotions get the best of me. And I came here today to apologize for that. Thank you, Commissioner Tobias, for bringing that to attention, to my attention. I went back and reviewed the video, and I said some things I probably shouldn't have said, and I hope I didn't offend any of the board members. So, I thought about it. I'd lost some sleep over, and I thought, "Let me come to public comment and formally apologize to all you commissioners for letting my emotions get the best of me in a meeting and saying some things that I probably shouldn't have." So, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to say, Mr. Moya, that's very commendable, and I appreciate it so much. Always forgiven right after that night, but thank you. That's pretty cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tovey? I think he left. All right. We're going to move into public hearings. Item H-1?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item H-1 is a request for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the second public hearing to consider revisions to Chapter 62, Article 6, Division 1, Section 62, 1102, Definitions and Rules of Construction regarding cargo shipping containers to be used as residential accessory structures and sheds. At the first reading, the Board wanted to move forward to allow these containers to be utilized for the storage sheds with the same requirement of the existing shed locations and permit requirements and provisions of no stacking. And the ordinance that we're presenting today contains those provisions. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 4-1. Item H-2?
Commissioners, item H-2 and H-3 are related, so I will read both of them into the records similar as we do with the zoning meetings, so we can have a discussion, to give you guys the opportunity to discuss both items at once. H-2 is a request from JSF Land Trust and Jacob and Fay Shapiro trustees for a small-scale, comprehensive plan amendment changing the future land use designation from residential 4 to residential 6.
Okay.
Item H-3 is the companion rezoning for that property to change the zoning from rural residential mobile home to residential attached 6 zoning. If you have any questions, we're here, and we're certainly happy to answer them.
And just for the public's sake, because this is a zoning issue, public hearing, the presenter gets 15 minutes, in case you're wondering why I'm so generous with the clock.
Madam Chair, I just have a brief disclosure.
Okay.
I've spoken with Ms. Rosenka about this. Obviously, she's in support.
Yes, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. I did too. I spent some time with Ms. Rosenka yesterday, and you're going to hear most of that conversation here, I'm guessing, in just a few minutes.
And I also spoke with Ms. Rosenka yesterday by telephone. Or day before yesterday, wasn't it?
Saturday.
Saturday. It was Saturday. Gosh. Days run together. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I spoke to Ms. Rosenka also by phone since the P&amp;Z meeting, so I want that on the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Clearly, Ms. Rosenka's done her work. I spoke with her on Saturday as well.
Appreciate all your time working on the weekends.
Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Great. Madam Chair, members of the County Commission, my name is Kim Rosenka. I'm here representing JSFS Land Trust and the applicant Soho One Development LLC, which is the intended purchaser and developer of this project. I am at Cantwell &amp; Goldman and Cocoa Village. I want to thank all the planning and zoning staff and the natural resources staff, Mr. John Denninghoff, and your engineering staff, and all of you for walking through this process. It has been a long discussion over how to make this compatible and how to help the neighbors not feel like they're being infringed upon. And I do truly appreciate all of you working with me, my client, and Sid Shaheb, the project engineer. This has been one of the more difficult binding development plans I've ever had to negotiate, and I understand why, because things have happened in the past, and you don't want to make the same mistakes twice. I understand that. At the October 3, 2019 County Commission hearing, I had a long presentation. I don't want to go through it all again, but just a few concepts that I did talk about. I explained the townhomes and why they needed the zoning and the land use change. I explained the difficulty with this infill project because over six acres of the less-than-10 acres are wetlands. I asked for the residential 6 for flexibility, but the developer has agreed to limit it to five units to the acre, so it's more between rez 4 and between rez 6. Requested the RA 2.6, the single-family attached, not multifamily, so these buildings can be built around the wetlands to get any useful lands at all in development. Also, I explained that this is consistent with future land use element, dealing with multiple housing choices. That's something that is necessary, especially with all the growth going up in North County. Currently, it's for one manufacturer mobile home per acre. With the wetlands, maybe you get three. We don't have good access. There's a lot of drainage problems. So, I know economic feasibility is not something you should consider, but this infill project won't be developed unless there is density and flexibility in development. It just simply doesn't work with the current zoning. Otherwise, it would be developed by now. That's the only undeveloped parcel in the area, except when you go further west towards 95 and over. This is a unique property. It's undevelopable without a zoning change, and it will provide the housing choices. We all discussed, and we heard from three residents about what their concerns were. Traffic has been a concern. The developer has agreed to improve Ranch Road to the entrance of their project. We're lining that up with Falk Avenue because that's good engineering principles, and I believe your traffic department, Public Works, would say that. There has been some concept about moving it further to the east, which, while that would make sense from cost perspective because of the wetlands and the drainage issues, that moving that road, which would be higher than the rest of the property, is going to be difficult. Also, too, it really does need to line up with Falk Avenue in case there is something that blocks Ranch Road at some point. There's another secondary access if you line it up with Falk Avenue. That's what Mr. Shaheb told me yesterday. I had forgotten that point when I'd spoken to some of you. Drainage is a concern. Again, this is a site plan issue under Section 623202, and they have to maintain all their water on site and can't negatively impact historical drainage patterns. So, the developer understands that, Mr. Shaheb understands that, and that will be done at site plan. The final issue was the buffering, the view from the neighbors. They're concerned about the privacy of the second-floor townhome windows, looking into windows on adjacent properties. And I said it at the meeting, but again, put it in the Binding Development Plan, the revised version, two stories and with parking. So, there may be parking under a portion of the bottom floor, but there won't be three stories. It won't be two floors with parking on the bottom. So, you're limited to two floors. We, you all tabled this to allow us to work on the BDP language, and we have tried to do that, and staff has worked with us repeatedly. I think we're on draft four now, which you'll see, which I just presented to you, handed to you. The, we could not provide the full landscape plan, as you've seen in other projects, because we don't have the topo. This is a contract purchaser. The topographical survey and engineering costs are going to be pretty high on this project, the tree survey as well. We did have an engineer go out there, an environmental engineer. He has walked part of the property. We know there are hardwoods. We know there are pines in the area of the buffers. We just don't know exactly what's there, but those trees have been there a long time, may provide some buffering already. We just don't know yet. At the meeting October 3, there was a lack of clarity, at least on my part, as to what buffers would be required. The subdivision code requires a 15-foot subdivision buffer in its natural state. So, that 15-foot natural buffer has to be there. We're also agreeing to a secondary buffer in the Binding Development Plan of opacity, and that's language that was requested. We can change it. We can define it, whatever you're more comfortable with, but to me, opacity means you can't see through it. There was something on the Internet that a piece of black paper is opaque. So, if you can't see through it, if it's like a piece of black paper, that's what my client intends to provide, is an opaque buffer from the second-floor windows, so they can't see into pools or neighboring houses. I talked with staff after this meeting. They were diligent about it. I was trying to get some details of types of bushes and try to do a landscape plan. We just couldn't do it. So, we talked to staff and did a revised Binding Development Plan on October 11 and submitted that to staff, based upon an email I'd gotten from staff. So, that language with the two years was based upon an email I had gotten from staff. We've now taken that out of the Binding Development Plan and agreed to opacity at the time of occupancy of the townhomes. So, with the time that people are moving into those townhomes, they're not going to be able to see into the neighbors' yards. There is a memo that was provided to you either Thursday or Friday. I got it late on Friday. I've tried to address those in the revised document. I understand there's still some concerns, but again, a Binding Development Plan is not being approved by you right now. That's something you approve at a later meeting. So, if the intent is there, or you have things to add that we can agree to, I still think we can get through this and approve it today without having a tabling. My client is not here due to a medical condition, but he does hope to close by the end of the month. That's, he extended it out after the last meeting. He was intending to close right after this meeting, which I don't know why, but he was. Also, too, the zoning's not complete until the Binding Development is approved. So, there is still another opportunity for you to come through here. So, we do have the new BDP. Many of the staff comments, as I said, did make some sense. I think some, there was some confusion as to what I was saying and the placement of language. We can move it around, but I think the intent is there, that everything that the staff wanted and comments that I'd heard from you all of what should be in there. So, if we look at the Binding Development Plan, it's the fourth draft on the top right corner, and I've given them to the neighborhoods, residents that are here as well. I've given them a copy of this. I handed it to them about a half hour ago. On paragraph four on page two, this was the language requested be put back in there regarding receiving a certificate of completion prior to the issuance. Staff and engineering, Public Works, asked that we take out the notwithstanding, and then the bold language is what staff asked us to put in there. Sid Shaheb, the engineer, asked that I put the italicized language in there. So, the proposed Ranch Road improvement shall be a 22-foot flush-shoulder roadway. I added, "With minimum improvements to the existing staff open soil ditch conveyance system to extent necessary for stormwater conveyance." I don't know if that's acceptable to staff or not. Mr. Shaheb thought that it should be, but we don't know. Number five, that first sentence is the language we had from October 3. The next language, "The concept plan does not vest or obligate the developer-owner to the improvements therein of the concept plan." That was requested in the staff memo. I put it in that paragraph because that's the only place the concept plan is mentioned, and that's why I thought it was appropriate to go there, but it can be moved if necessary. Paragraph six and seven are completely new, and this is to deal with the opacity from the line of sight of the second-floor windows. We don't know if they're going to be 15, 16, 17, but there are only going to be two floors. So, we've agreed to a line of sight from those windows into the neighbor's property. So, they can't get a temporary or permanent CO until that is done. So, that will be an inspection item whenever they come through for certificate of occupancies. And again, opacity is you can't see. And again, we don't even know where these buildings are going to be, but wherever they are, we're going to do a landscape buffer, so they can't see through it. We have to have the natural perimeter buffer, and then we have the second opacity buffer that is in these paragraphs. So, before certificate of occupancy are issued, there seemed to be some confusion about the landscape buffer may be placed in the 15-foot subdivision buffer. That just means we can add trees to the natural buffer to make it opaque at that area. If we can't do it there, we'll do it someplace else. But a landscape plan's going to be submitted through site planning, and so this will all be reviewed with staff, and they will say yea or nay. They've already made recommendation on trees, which are on here, the bamboo and some other foliage is recommended in here. Number seven, the landscape buffer shall be installed before certificate of completion, meaning before the site work is done. And that also gives it more time to grow. Then, it has to be at opacity before certificate of occupancies for unit owners to be in there. Then, we've, either a maintenance bond or performance bond. According to staff, there's no language about a performance bond in the statutes, excuse me, the ordinances, but you can still require a performance bond. So, either we post it, I mean, not performance, a maintenance bond, because we're going to perform before certificate of occupancies, so a maintenance bond would make more sense. We can work that out, or you can specify now, but that's so those trees will stay to opacity. The rest of this is the same. I provided to you three pages of the Space Coast Credit Union BDP, which we discussed. It was passed in 2005. I just provided you the paragraph that is of relevance. This is the one that has caused concern. It doesn't even say opacity or opaque. It says screening, and that, I think, was part of the problem. So, if you look at page two, paragraph two of that Binding Development Plan from 2005, the only thing it says is where it's supposed to be from north to south, north to south, east to west. No, north to south. It doesn't say how depth it is, how deep it is. That was all done at the landscape plan stage. All it has is one line, that the buffer shall be solid and shall screen, and what we've provided to you is much more detailed. I've also provided you with a map with red circles. Those are the people that have come to you to discuss their concerns. As you'll see, there's one across the street, Mr., I think that's Mr. Everett. He is across the street to the south, and then Ms. Barber has spoken too. She is adjacent, but we have agreed not to develop next to her at all. That's a landscape area that will stay in its natural state. I have another documents for you. I don't really want to go through all them. If I have to, I will during rebuttal in my three minutes left, but those have information regarding how far the buffers are that already exist from the property line to the adjacent homeowners. They're 31 feet to 44 feet. There's already a large backyard buffer from all of these residents that may be impacted. And so, with that, I would ask that you approve this as a future land use rez 6, zoning RA 2.6 with a Binding Development Plan, to come back to you for final approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two minutes and 38 seconds. I lost those questions.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I was just thinking, when I was listening to what you were saying and having dealt with the Bay Tree issue, it was along the same lines. Your developer might consider those second-floor windows, make the windows opaque. That would solve that problem with the buffer, and it would be a whole lot cheaper. So, just something for you to consider.
Well, I suggested the LED screens with the, you know, the palm trees blowing, but
Yeah, there you go.
He didn't like that idea.
Oh, he didn't? Okay.
No, but, but we don't know. He may choose not to put windows in that face that way. We just don't know at this point. But we will make it so the top floors can't see into the neighbors. And, or he can't get certificate of occupancies. So he'll build and won't be able to sell.
All right, Linda Donahoe? I'm going to call, let him speak first, if that's all right.
I was wondering if I could wait till the other two spoke. I know Tom Wells has got a design that he's presenting to you, and I'd like to hear his...
I only have one more card. We usually try to go in order, but if he doesn't mind, I mean, it's up to him.
Is it okay, Tom? Do I want to go now?
Okay, so is this Tom Wells?
Yes.
Okay, come on. And he has a handout for us, too.
Good morning.
You state your name and address?
My name is Tom Wells, reside at 7586 Fringe Place in Port St. John. Been a longtime resident of Brevard County and of Cypress Woods, which is the subdivision at a butts.
Can you pull the mic down? I'm sorry, I can hardly hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, my, my objection to this request is that if we look at RA 2-6 zoning, I don't, I contend that in creating that zoning, they never envisioned the approach that's being used here. For example, if I had 100 acres, RA 2-6, and 90 of the acres of that was wetlands, and in fact was a lake, then I would be able to use 10 acres and put in the number of units that could be used for 100 acres. I mean, that's, that's a ridiculous approach, but I maintain that that's approach that's being used here. So the RA 2-6 creation was not envisioning what we have. We think that it would be more appropriate that RA 2-4 would be more appropriate in use of the limited amount of usable property. When this zoning was envisioned, those people didn't say, well, you can only, you can put in so many units, but outside those, the immediate use, nobody else has access to any of that property. But that's what we have here. And in fact, we compound that because they're also asking to use the wetlands. And the proposal that, that I've presented was recommended by two engineers with significant experience and without any proposal on my part. I just presented it, here's what they want to do, and they said, okay, to minimize the impact to the wetlands, then we should enter in the far east part of the property. And if, especially now that they're going to use ranch road, it would be easy to do that. It minimizes the impact to the wetlands. Now, the impact to the wetlands is more significant if you're going to go through the middle of it, because now you've created two pieces of wetlands, as opposed to one area of wetlands. And they're also proposing to use the wetlands for their turnaround for emergency vehicle access. Again, you're using the wetlands, which my overriding concern on, on all this is the drainage issue on the ranch road. So all, all that, everything you do in the wetlands is going to increase that drainage And at the, at the zoning meeting, there was a motion to change it to RA 2-4, and we think that would be the more appropriate choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Donahoe?
All right. My name's Linda Donahoe. I'm the president of the Cypress Woods HOA. I'm not representing the whole HOA, because there's 305 homes, and I haven't talked to every one of them. So I'm giving you my opinion, what I've heard, who I've talked to, and the opinion of the residents that's being, that's concerned with this area. Number one, I wanted to have Tom tell you in advance, because I know he's done an awful lot of work on this proposal he just presented, that I would say that we're behind Tom with his proposal. As far as the wetlands and the use of the wetlands and the drainage has always been a concern of ours, because there's already an issue with drainage and flooding back there. So, you know, they've done a lot of work, so something for you guys to consider, if you would. The proposal changes that the developer has made looks really good to me. I mean, I like the fact that it's going to be opaque. I like the fact that if they put the windows in a different area, that would be better. Or if they even had them where they couldn't see out, you know, but who wants a window like that? So I don't know. But my big concern is bamboo. A lot of the residents said they really didn't want bamboo, so I don't know. I mean, you know, you've got 305 people. Everybody's going to have a different opinion. Some of you know what a bamboo would look like if they put it up there, and it's going to be about 20-foot high. You know, I don't know. I don't know how that would look. I'm almost thinking a wall would be better than a bamboo, you know, something that's going to be decent to look at. And, you know, like I said, in the past, we have, these are expensive homes. You know, they have pools. They've been there a long time. And now they have these, the developer coming in here wanting to put a two-story house behind them. Well, you know, at the time, who thought? You know? So I'm thinking that they're thinking it's going to deteriorate their homes, number one, because they've got these two-story homes that are now coming right behind them. And our development is starting to pick up, and housing is, you know, it's starting to create some interest, you know, where we have, it's starting to come back. And we don't want to make it worse than what it was by having that townhouse. I also know a lot of the residents in Port St. John's are worried about townhouses in the area that we've never had before anyway. I can only say, I don't think that we're totally against the townhomes. Some of us are, some of us aren't. But the fact that the opaque, that's a good thing. The question on whether, and they haven't specifically said what that's going to be. And, and her comment was, we're not real sure where the homes are going to be placed. And I kind of, that kind of threw me off, because I thought the design was already there. So I think the changes that you're having, that have been made are good, and, you know, we can probably, with your help, you know, make some conclusions where this can all go through, and hopefully they will consider Tom's idea and look at that. You know, at least look at it and see what you think. But thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Sullivan?
I just want to say, so Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So just on, last time I was here, I brought a book called Mirage, which is about wetlands and about the importance of preserving wetlands at all costs. We have issues to the Indian River Lagoon. We're trying to improve the water quality and bring back the lagoon, and one of the, I would say, most important things to the lagoon is our wetlands and preserving it, because they serve a huge service of cleaning those waters. So anytime anyone wants to impact the wetlands, it should be like a big red flag goes off. I would really like to ask you to read that book or look at, you know, just how important the wetlands are. And as you're seeing in Merritt at another meeting recently, you know, they're having flooding in areas on Merritt Island, because development was done and took away wetlands. So you want to be, not only do they serve that function of cleaning the water, but they serve the function also of protecting the lands around them as a flood zone. So please protect the wetlands at all cost. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Vrsenka?
May I see Mr. Wells' plan? I think I've seen it before.
Got to get your minutes right. Change the minute, the second. Yeah, I'll change this. I don't think you can change the seconds. I can't change the seconds, so...
Okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Unless you want to wait till 38 to start.
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Regarding Mr. Wells' comments, I have seen that plan before. We did show that to the engineer. That's why they really say it needs to line up with Falk Avenue for a secondary access, emergency, things like that, and it's good engineering and planning. The site density, as you know, is common. You spread it out over the entire site, so it doesn't, all density is done that way. It's, it's very common. Regarding the wetlands, the project will meet your code and your comp plan, and that's what we're required to do. And it's 1.8%, except for access, I believe. The wetlands are not fully evaluated, but we will meet county code. Regarding the RRMH1, the current zoning, that allows a height of 35 feet right now. So does all of the zoning in Cypress Woods. So you could, in theory, have a mobile home that's 35 feet. I don't know, but it was possible by the current zoning. Briefly, if you look through the packet I gave you, the last packet, the first page shows all those that surround the project, and who has houses, who has fences, the distance to the pool, things like that. Again, none of the people that have spoken to you are directly adjacent or, or are people on this list. The next document, page two, was from Darcy McGee, and there were things that we had discussed for the Binding Development Plan. Page three, four, and five is your zoning matrix that says if you have rez six, then RA 2-6 is compatible. If you have rez four, RA 2-4 is compatible. Page seven is your marker 24 subdivision waiver of the landscape buffer that's coming before you. I only brought this to your attention because staff has repeatedly told me, well, they did all their engineering, and yes, I understand that, but we don't own the property, and we're not as far along. And even if we did, their waiver of their buffer, they're showing two floors looking down on single-family homes at a 40-foot distance. So I just say this is a different project, and please don't compare it, because they are completely different. The last page shows that two-story home looking down on a one-story home. We believe that we have reached our, have met our burden with substantial competent evidence of why the existing zoning is no longer reasonable. We've worked diligently to solve it through the BDP with potential, to solve the potential adverse impacts. The issue of privacy encroachment truly is speculative, in my opinion, because you could have a zoning with 35 feet there. But we understand the concerns, and the developer is willing to fix that with the opacity standard. The, the developer has agreed also to install the off-site improvements of ranch road. LPA and P&amp;Z voted to approve both of these, and we request that you approve these with the BDP, with any changes that you think need to be made to the BDP, to come back to you for final approval. And we did agree to allow staff to review the landscape buffer and have it come back to you, but that wasn't seen to be prudent, so, but we would be willing to do that if the staff, if the county commission wanted to see the landscape plan during site plan review. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Cockings if he would give some overview. I know that you got this late last night, and you gave me a little bit of information this morning, and we really haven't had time to, to talk about staff's thoughts on this. I would like to hear from you right now, sir.
Yes, ma'am. So we did receive this yesterday afternoon around 3:00 PM, and Kim has been, is correct, and we've been working with her pretty diligently through the last week to try to get something to bring to the board. The, the memo that we sent out last Friday on October 17th, we went back and we listened to the third meeting, and the board identified three things that they wanted to have included in this buffer, or three criteria, if you will, of what the buffer should, should be able to accomplish. So the first one was the neighbors, meaning the existing folks, behind should see a natural, complete buffer that completely protects the neighbors to a height of 35 feet. And then it went, and then you all went on to say, there should be the inability to see one project from the other. So our analysis on the third Binding Development Plan, which is the one that we looked at last week, and now we're looking at the fourth, was based on that. So one of the things that we heard today is that the buffer is going to buffer the second floor window from the adjacent property. But it doesn't necessarily take into consideration what, at least, or what we understood, was going to be the concerns on October 3rd as to there should be the inability to see one project from the other. That, to me, would include more than just the window. If, if, if we were not, you know, so that's, that was what our analysis was based on. So I don't know that, what has been presented today is the fourth element accomplishes that, or the fourth draft accomplishes that. It probably accomplishes window, just buffering the window, but I don't believe that it gives you a complete buffer from one project to the other project. And especially with the consideration of opacity being, you know, not being able to see. So with that being said, I think that, you know, what, what you all have to decide is whether or not the Binding Development Plan mitigates the impact for the zoning. I can't tell you that it does, because, you know, based on what we understood from the third, unless you all have a conversation and give us different direction, today, that's what we understood, was a complete buffer from one project to the other, just not second floor windows to the adjacent property. The, you know, if that mitigates the introduction of the rez six, future land use in this area that's completely rez four, then that would be something that you all would consider. So the, furthermore, the conversation or the comment that Mr. Vrsenka made regarding the, the other project that we have that's similar on, on the agenda today, it's similar in some senses, but it's dissimilar in others, where that project, they have done their site planning, so we do have complete engineering, and we can tell you exactly what it's going to look like based on the design. Here, we are still identifying things that the board has told us they should be concerned about, and if this goes forward, I don't know that we're going to have everything covered. And I, and I'll go back and mention just the second floor window to the adjacent property. That was something that we did not understand was the intention. Does that help?
Thank you, sir. Madam Chair, can I ask Ms. Donahue to come up just for a second, so I can ask her a question?
Sure.
I, I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit here, and I think you're going to have to go back and, and ask the homeowners or find a way. I would like to know their thoughts on a buffer that completely buffers the projects, or just from that second-story window looking in, because there was two comments made at last meeting. One is you don't want people looking into their pools and their homes. So I, I would like to know how the homeowners feel about that, if you, if you wouldn't mind coming back.
Well, I can tell you right now, we would prefer to have where you, it's separate completely.
Yeah.
I mean, that would be the preference.
Okay.
Is, you know, and what he's saying is, at the third meeting, we did talk about that, this is something new, the, the window thing.
Okay.
And I'm like, well, if we have to, I suppose we could agree to that, but that's not our preference.
Okay.
Our preference would be, oh, I'm sorry, exactly what was said at the last meeting, so.
Okay.
And I can tell you that just firsthand, that that's the case.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Bentley, is the language in this BDP enforceable for the county if, if it were found that we're comfortable with this?
I think we would have some challenges, because it does not say exactly where the buffer will be built.
Okay.
Nor does it say exactly how high it will be, nor does it say exactly how many plants will be planted. And so there are some challenges there.
Okay. Okay, so the question is, is there a way to create 49 townhomes on this property? I, I believe it's possible. The, the problem right now that I'm having is this area is really, really wet. And, but you know what? It's really, really wet if we do R4 also. You know, it's, it's going to be eight pieces of, of homes on, on an acreage. So we still going to have to do mitigation for, for wetlands. So you know what? And this is cond... So you know what? And this is condensed, so that's a plus. There's sewer going in, that's a plus. Density on this, I'm still having a little bit of heartburn on the R6. I don't know how this really fits, but if there's a way to make it all fit, you know, I'm just trying so hard to get to a place where I can make this fit, because we do need homes. If they're nice townhomes, they're secluded in an area, you're taking care of the traffic problem. But I'm still struggling still with the zoning and with the buffers. I really think that you and your client are trying, so that leaves me a little bit of open-end hope here. But I don't think we're where we need to be as far as some kind of contractual thing to change zoning right now to protect the surrounding neighbors, which is a very important aspect for me. You know, the homeowners, they're very important if we're going to change zoning and bring some more density in around them. Not that I don't think this is a great project, again, so, but it's just trying to find a way to make this work. So I think there's a possibility, but I don't believe we're there yet. So what I would like to do, and here's the tricky part, is your client wants to buy it, but he hasn't bought it yet, so you're not going to invest money on the topo yet. I mean, I totally understand that. I wouldn't do it either. So they're trying to see if this project will fit, and I get it. But if we're going to do it that route, we're going to have to get really good comfort with staff and legal, that we've got something here that's going to protect what it is we're trying to create. And I'm not sure that we're there yet. And I know I'm not in my head yet, but I really want to be. So I'm going to either throw out, either we deny this or we table it again and see if we can't get some minds together and maybe get to a place like we did with Mr. Storch, and see if there is a possibility. But I think that's what I want to do, and just because I think we need to work out some more things if it's going to be possible, because I really have to have comfort in knowing that the density that we're doing here is okay, and it's hard to do without the studies. But again, I understand not doing them, because the ownership has it transferred. But just so you know, I really want to make this happen. I'm just not there yet. So, Madam Chair, after you do what you need to do, I'd like to make a motion possibly to table this item.
I'll second the, I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Pritchett to table, second by Commissioner Lober. Commissioner Tobias? Your light's on. Did you want to speak?
I apologize. No, Madam Chair, I'll just wait until this comes up again next time, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion?
Which date?
Which date?
How long do you think you need, Mr. Cockings, to make a decision on what you think we can do?
So the next regular board meeting is November 12th, and then you have the November 19th, which is the organizational meeting. You usually don't have regular items on that, and then we get to the 10th.
Do we have a zoning meeting in November?
We do have a zoning meeting, but that's on the 7th, which would compress the time by a couple of days for us to get this resolved. So I would probably say the 12th would probably be the best time.
Table the other.
My comment briefly?
I actually wanted to ask you a question, but come on up.
Okay.
I had a completely different understanding of what I was trying to do in this BDP, because I listened to the minutes too, and I've spoken to the commissioner, and my understanding was buffering. And so, you know, it wasn't, and it's not 35 feet. It's not going to be 35 feet. It was never going to be 35 feet. So I don't know what you want, and that's my struggle. And I'm looking at a Binding Development Plan that, to me, is way more enforceable than Space Coast Credit Union ever was, yet that was enforced. So I don't know what to do, so I need direction from you. And I don't think it's important to have where it is and the height of it, so long as we've agreed to opacity and we have that 15-foot buffer. I don't know what you want, because I did not hear completely buffering the project. Especially when you've got houses that are 15 feet from each other in Cypress Woods.
I think the problem is, is we don't even know the height of your project. You don't have all this designed yet, so we really don't know. It's kind of a little bit abstract. I know you've got ideas, but it's just so abstract. To change to an R6 zoning, I don't have comfort there. And Ms. Bentley doesn't have comfort of what we're putting together is even enforceable. So we can get this and make the residents all feel good about it, then it can come back with something we can't enforce, and they're all going to be mad at me, and they're in my district, and, boy, they're ferocious. And then I don't know about the density. So I know you're trying, but you know this, because you do this all the time, Ms. Rzanka, that we really haven't hit a place of legality to where we're getting something that is what we can enforce, because we don't have the engineering. I understand that. I wouldn't spend the money yet either without owning it. But we're not there yet to where we can take a look at and think, yes, this will work. No, it won't work. Again, I'm not even real sure you're going to pull off the stormwater. So I, but to change the zoning, because we can't go back once we do it, I'm not comfortable yet with what we got. So again, we can try to get and get something worked out, or we can just deny, because I'm not comfortable passing it.
My question was, what do you want? Do you want line-of-sight vision?
We don't know what you're building. We don't know the height of what you're building. You told us two-story. I don't know if you're going to have vault ceilings. I don't know yet. I still don't even know where you're going to lay the project compared to the other neighborhoods' items. We do not have enough information to where I can even logically, you know, ignorantly, because I don't do this job, figure out, well, you know, that looks all right. I know you're trying, and that's got my attention, but we're just not even there. We're logically, I've got a sense of comfort of protecting the neighbors right now with a project. Again, I do like the project, but I just, you know, and staff's got a lot of concerns, which gives me a lot of concerns. And then Eaton says, Rita, we can't even enforce this if this is what you think you're doing. So I have to step back and let the experts jump in and figure out a way to make it work, if it's possible.
Okay, but we are not going to design the project before we come back to you. We're not going to have an exact height of the buildings.
Well, then, I don't think I can pass an R6 zoning with the density with this, because I don't think we're getting any comfort.
Okay, then can we go to RA24?
I don't know. Can you come back with the information on that? Because I have no clue on what we're doing with that, or if that'll work, so.
But you've just said density, so I'm just trying to find out if you want. I don't know what to expect, because I thought I had met what you expected. Truly, I thought I had met what you expected.
Well, we had late information. We talked. And again, you know, I'm not an expert.
I understand.
The commissioner, and we talked, and then it got to staff, and they didn't really have enough time to go through it. So I found them this morning. They said, yeah, we still got a couple of things here, Rita. We don't think this is, Ms. Eaton, do you think we're going to, well, I don't really think we're going to force this. So it is just too quick. So if you want another shot at this, we really need to table it and have some conversations again.
Okay.
And maybe we can get some more information that way. And again, I'm sorry that I'm not maybe defining this as well as I should, but I really don't know even how to define it at this point. So I really need some help from everybody, and I'm sure we all do, to get to a point to where it's comfortable.
All right, you know, zoning is a use, it's not a project, so that's why we're struggling with this.
But once it's R6, it's R6.
Then that's why I suggested not R6, and RA24, which is comparable with RES4.
Well, again, that's right here at the second, and so that's something we're going to have to work on if that works.
Okay, all right.
I think I was a little confused in the meeting too, because we weren't talking about opaque buffers. We never said the word opaque. We were talking about trees, because you were talking about the trees in Vieira and how long they took to grow and stuff, so. But that was going to be eventually when they grew. They understood.
No, they didn't want to do fence, but the neighbors were very strong upon, again, I don't know if this fits, that they just don't want this project to be able to see anything they have over there. It's a really beautiful neighborhood. They've been there for a long time.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing, and I'm not saying that I would approve it as it stands now.
I know, I know.
But what I'm saying is, I went back and watched the meeting too, and I don't think we talked about an opaque wall that would hide a 35-foot building. I don't, that's not the impression I got, because we did a lot of discussion on making sure we put in the kind of foliage and the kind of trees that would grow quickly and all that kind of stuff.
Well, they brought up those ideas, but I like the idea of the berm, which we can't do, because it's a solid wall. You can't see through. So again, there's still some stuff to work out. But I think no matter what height it is, I'm going to want it to be OPEC, opaque. I can't say that word for nothing, just so that the neighbors have complete confidence and feeling like it's not something that their neighborhood's now being intruded upon, so.
And perhaps, as a suggestion, when you bring back, even if you don't have a concept quite yet, because you haven't purchased the property and this is just the zoning, maybe, you know, worst, look at the worst case as far as how close the house will be. Because I've been to plenty of subdivisions that where houses were on top of each other, where there are two stories, and, you know, if you're far enough from any, you wouldn't see in their backyard anyhow, because it would be just too far. You do some line-of-sight stuff. I know that gets expensive, but we've had that issue before in the city, so. Commissioner Lober?
Just wanted to clarify with Commissioner Pritchett. So the motion, which I seconded, you're contemplating the continuance applying to both items H2 and H3, correct?
Yes, sir.
Perfect.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And that is to November 12th?
Yes. Item H4?
As they're getting set up, I'll move to approve it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Tobias. I have no cards. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now, if they could all be that easy, right?
I'll make H5 that easy. I'll go ahead and move to approve H5 as well.
Second.
I have a motion to approve H5 with, by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H6?
I'll second that one.
There's no cards. There's no cards. I wouldn't just skip through people. And when a commission wants to talk, they put lights on.
I second Commissioner Smith's motion.
Did you put in a card, sir? I know you were waving.
No, I just wanted to know what time the meeting, the 12th, or if we're going to be noted about.
The meeting, is it a 5:00 meeting? 5:00 PM? It's 5:00 PM on the 12th? Regular commission meeting?
Okay.
Okay. All right, where were we?
H6, Commissioner Smith made a motion, both Commissioner Pritchett and I seconded it.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H7?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion to approve H7 by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I know this one's probably going to get some commentary, but I'll, in the meanwhile, make a motion to approve H8. I'd imagine there's some comments. No?
I have to look at my updated agenda. Nope, I don't have anything.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve item H8, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, "I" won't be that quick.
What's that?
"I" is not going to be that quick, unfortunately.
You guys want to take five minutes?
I'm okay. You guys are good.
Yes, five minutes or no? Okay.
Do you want me to kind of take "I" one, or do you want me to?
Item "I" one? I think District 3 has its name on it.
This was the one that was continued, but I had met with the folks, so I don't know. You want to handle it?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to thank Commissioner Lober here for continuing this. I have no idea where this went, but this was in his district, and I certainly did not mean to step on his toes by any way. It just is something that started before his tenure. In fact, it started before mine. So though it's on the agenda under mine, I'd like to, with your indulgence, pass it over to him, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Lober?
I do wear a size 13 shoe, so my toes have been stepped on on occasion, but I don't have any ill will on this one. So the short version is, I met with the applicant, the applicant's attorney, and the applicant's engineer with respect to this. I don't want to waste everyone's time rehashing history from prior to us even being on the commission. That said, what I'm proposing is taking what Commissioner Tobias had proposed and modifying it slightly. So it'll read, "It's requested for staff to restrict any additional extension to." We're going to strike the number 6, replace that with the number 9 months. We're also going to strike pending no declared state or federal emergencies. So the first sentence will read, "It is requested for staff to restrict any additional extension to nine months, period." The rest of it's going to be the same. I do want to have at the end, "Staff should call a performance bond without further action from the board. Should these actions not be met within the specified period," I'm sorry, "within the time period specified." So essentially, what I'm getting at is, they have nine months to finish it. They have ample time, even if we have a couple tornadoes and hurricanes. We've built that in, if I don't choke to death here. So in the end of nine months, if they want to come back and request something, they're not going to have much of a chance of having that. You know, I said, if it's impractical, you know, then you have time built in to deal with that. Basically, just get it done in nine months. So my motion is to allow them a single nine-month extension and to direct staff to call the performance bond at the end of nine months if they're not through with what they have to be through with.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober. I have a card. Ms. Rzanka?
And also, the owner is present as well. We agreed with the motion by Mr. Lober. So if we have questions?
All right, well, since Ms. Rzanka wasn't on the mic, she just stated that the owner agreed to the provisions that Commissioner Lober worked out with them. All right, so I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item "I" 2?
They say they should let us know when it's open, so we can go over and get something to eat. Oh, it is open, that's right.
"I" 2 is a recommended rejection of the single proposal received in response to RFP 51917, the solid waste conversion facility. The proposal response that we did receive was substantially deficient of the required information that we had asked for that would have allowed for a thorough vetting of the proposed improvement technologies for the selection committee to make a recommendation to the board.
Move to reject.
Motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item "I" 3? I've got some cards on these, and...
Commissioner, what we have in front of you is the item that is a continuation from the July 8th meeting. At that time, we solicited, or you solicited some additional information that we bring to the table. That information has, we have received the majority of the information. The, we have, at that time, we didn't have the appraisal from the county. We have it at that now, and it's included in your package. We also did not have the condition use permit for our 10 acres, and we do have that at this time. There were some questions on fiscal impact and how it would impact the cost per ton and how it reflects in the price that we charge on a per-ton basis and moving it to the different options. That's what you find in the fiscal impact. I will bring your attention to a couple of things in that fiscal impact that you should know about. There is no, these are just future costs. In other words, if the county has already invested in that, they are not included in here. For example, the Cocoa landfill has leachate tanks already, so we don't need to purchase them. The 192 property is ours, the CDF property is ours, and also the Sarno property is ours. Thereby, when you look down to the purchase of land, it shows as zero. The rest of the, of the cost has been pretty much vetted, and we just presented it for comparison purposes. You also see the difference, Sarno is being presented for you as a baseline, so you can compare it to the other ones, and also to the contribution that each ton contributes to the CIP version. One last thing on it is that we did not take into consideration any kind of permits that we did not have or the property did not have. In other words, if our property has a limitation of, or the properties have a limitation of 40 feet height, we did not consider anything, and it does have a vetting in it. We did not consider any rerouting of ditches that were, that were shown later on in the PowerPoint that you'll see from Florida recyclers. And we did not consider at all the removal of the mulch over in the Florida recyclers, which we have no use for. That mulch, we have right now a surplus of mulch, and we pay somebody to take it. If you remember correctly, during the last rate hearings that we did have, we had to raise our rates in order to be able to get rid of the mulch, because a vendor had raised our rates. Our estimation of getting rid of that mulch for us, not for anybody else, ranges between $1 and $2 million, depending on how much mulch it is in there. And what we're seeking is guidance on the signature for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Environmental Resource Permit.
Commissioner Lober?
I've got a couple of thoughts with respect to this. I think, you know, first off, with respect to the signature, there's nothing that's pressing... respect to the signature, there's nothing that's pressing us to sign at this moment. I'm not saying that there wouldn't be circumstances down the road where it might be a good idea to sign, but I don't think there's any reason to do anything that's going to permanently affect the property down in that neck of the woods. That said, when you look at the cost between the different options, the five options that are listed, I think the cost may actually appear a little bit higher for the first four options than it really would be, because if we're not going to use that 192 option, there's a value to that land where we'd turn around and sell it. So, that would be, in my mind, something that would offset and reduce the cost of the initial four options, just in the order that they're printed by the columns. The other thing is, as was mentioned by Yuri, the fourth option, the Florida recyclers option, is based on a 40-foot elevation, not an 81. We had a huge chunk of our property adjacent to it at 81. Melbourne just allowed us, I was at the meeting, actually, with Yuri and staff, including one of the assistant county attorneys, allowed us to match that 81-foot for the portion that we asked. I don't have any reason to believe that Councilman Alfry, or I believe it's his district, or any of the other folks in Melbourne would be opposed to us going up to 81 feet for that. They seem very empathetic and sympathetic with the issues that we're facing on a county-wide scale with respect to solid waste management. I just, you know, my thought at this point, I don't know what the best option is, but I don't think that we need to go ahead and autograph that sheet of paper just yet.
Mr. Bate? I mean, I have a bunch of cards. I don't know if everybody wants to talk before the public.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of additional points in terms of the fiscal impact that Yuri spoke about. One thing I want to mention as well is that, under the Florida recyclers option there, I believe the cost that was utilized in that option was based on the county's appraisal, which was about a $3 million difference in cost. So, that is part of that, and so it makes that option look a little bit slow, lower when you look at all the factors that they considered in the cost per ton for that particular one. And I should also mention that, depending on some of the other options, like the northeast expansion option, and some other issues that will come up, perhaps, on different valleys, and what timeframe those valleys come in, there are some additional costs that are not considered, like the moving of the ditch, stormwater, and as we mentioned in the agenda item, there is, we don't have a response yet. They've been very cooperative for Florida recyclers in giving permission to get environmental testing done. I believe that. We're anticipating getting that done during November, so that's upcoming. And I just want to make sure the board was apprised of all those items. Thank you.
Commissioner Tobias?
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to let you know that we have the attorney that has been representing us with the different agencies, and we also have the engineering record. That's just for if the board has any questions from them.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I certainly want to dovetail off of Commissioner Loeb's sentiment on this one. I think that the analysis would be skewed, as he mentioned, if we were to sell the land on option 4. And under that, I would, Madam Chair, just a quick question for Mr. Denninghoff. Is that okay?
Of course.
Mr. Denninghoff, my guess would be, if to sell it, it would be in the best interest of taxpayers to get the best and highest use for that land. Is that a, is that the way the county normally does business when we sell land, is for the best and the highest use?
Normal appraisals try to base it on, unless there's special instructions, base it on highest and best use.
If we were, first of all, what is, what is the cost of this permit if we were to grant permission to go ahead and do this?
I think Yuri can answer that better than I.
Are you asking about the environmental resource permit?
Yeah, the one that the U.S., the one that's suggested on here, the environmental resource permit signature.
We've already spent all the money required to bring that permit to a conclusion. The only thing missing on the permit is a signature from an authorized person from Brevard County.
Super. Back to Mr. Denninghoff, thank you very much. I was unaware. If that signature was put, would the land value increase?
My, I'm not an appraiser. I would suggest that, yes, it would increase.
Do we have, Madam Chair, do we, do we have any idea at approximate value that that might increase?
I don't have a number on it, but I'm going to guess that it would potentially double the value of the property. It might even be more than that.
Okay. Help me here, double. I mean, what, double, double, 12 million to 24 million? Is that what we're looking at?
I have difficulty putting the numbers on it. I'm sorry, but I can tell you that property that is permitted with the difficult-to-obtain permits increase in value dramatically. And in fact, the development, developers have contingency contracts to purchase a piece of property that are based on the assumption that they will get the permits. And should they not get the permits, they don't close, and because the value is much lower without those permits, and so they wouldn't pay the higher value.
So, thank you. So, to boil it down, if we were to go with Commissioner Loeb's fine suggestion of looking at an alternative and selling the land, a signature would cost us nothing and potentially bring in a windfall of an additional doubling of 10 to 12 million dollars, somewhere in that ballpark, for the price of a signature?
I would think that that's a potential outcome. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to hear what people have to say before I comment.
Commissioner Loeb?
I just want to add with respect to where Commissioner Tobias left it off, there is perhaps harder to quantify cost that's still associated with that, in that, once that's permitted, it's highly likely that's what that land is going to be used for, and the cost that goes along with that is the impact that's going to have, to go back to the item that we had earlier, where I mentioned, when I look at property rights, I look at what impact it's going to have to the neighbors. That's going to have a heck of an impact on the neighbors. Expanding an existing landfill or taking an already permitted area that's being used for something a little more on the industrial side, and focusing that on what's already being done, is a miniscule change, whereas taking land that's been farmland and turning it into a landfill, to me, is a much more intrusive, much more disruptive action to take. So, I would just try to be mindful of the folks that happen to live there as well. And I think, given the fact that we're at a stage where all that's required, from what I understand, is a signature, the due diligence has already been done by everyone that would ever want to research that. So, I would think that the value of the land, not to say it's 100% there, but I would think the value of the land, if we're trying to sell it, could be increased by virtue of having said, look, or by saying, we've already run it through the process. It's already passed through this. All that it needs is a signature, and we can relay that without actually having to go through and get the signature. That's essentially going to be an irreversible step. So, again, I'm not opposed to signing it at some point in time if that proves to be the right way to go about it, but I'm just not convinced that we're there yet. I think we need to determine what we're doing before we determine whether or not to sign.
Commissioner Pritchett?
When is the, for lack of better terminology, drop dead time that the signature has to be in before we start losing the ability to do the upgrades, that we lose the permitting?
There is no official date for it. What you're, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're talking about the timeline for something to be available at the time that Sarno runs out of capacity.
So, we've got a little bit of time, if we're waiting on that. But you don't have permitting hanging in the balance that we've already done a process through?
The permitting pretty much has all been done at the, at the federal level. It has been done at the state level. This is the last portion on the outside agencies. There's left the FDOT permit that has not been done for the turning lanes, and the permit from the FAA, which would be a second one. We already obtained it at one time, but they only are good for one year. So, we would have to research it. The rest of the permits left are all local permits from Brevard County.
So, it's, we're not going to inquire any cost by not doing any further process on the I-92 project, right? 192 project. Are we okay if we, before we had this discussion that if we didn't do X, Y, and Z, we've already invested this amount of money, we're about to lose it? Are we at that point at all right now? Have we already done X, Y, and Z?
We are pretty much, what the timeline says is that if we don't start construction by next year, and I, by me, I'm, by that, I mean the turning lanes and the fencing around the property to separate what Deseret is going to continue to rent from where we're going to be building, and give them the proper notice for them to vacate the southern portion of the property by September 30th of 2020, I can't assure you that we will have a, that 192 will be ready to accept waste if Sarno runs out.
Okay, so if we prolong this, we're going to have to pick another option here to jump in if we take our time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Good information. Here's, I, you know, I've been real honest with this. I have no plans in developing 192. I think we're in a day right now that we should be coming up with better ways to handle our waste, and that, you know, we're not there yet. You know, there's the yard debris and the mulching, and it's an expensive mess, but there's got to be some better way to handle some of this. So, but just so you know, I'm not, I'm not going to vote to sell 192 either. I think we have it. We need to take care of it. I love that the farmers are able to utilize the property. Whether we put in a turning lane or a couple of upgrades, it won't matter to me. It's our property will do it. But I have, I am not going to vote to sell this, and I'm not going to vote to develop it. So, I don't want it to be a place where we dump stuff. So, we're going to need to come up with some ideas. I'm glad we got a little more time on Sarno. You know, if we work with one of these others, it's good. Let me give caution to option 1. And not that I mind bringing more stuff to the District 1 thing, but we are already receiving the worst kind of trash that you can get. It's that class. And if you fill it up with the lower-grade stuff, you're going to fill that up, and we're going to lose the ability to use that. And it's Class 1, right? Or is it?
Yes, ma'am, Class 1.
Yeah. So, if you start putting Class 3 and 4 in there, we're going to fill that up, and we're going to have another bigger issue down the road. But I'm looking at the time period affair of what we've got to fulfill. And, you know, actually, you know, we're going to all be in and out by the time some of this is running out. So, you know, we can really stick it to the next generation of commissioners, but I think we're going to have to come up with some kind of consensus. So, I don't mind using some ideas, but again, I don't mind going ahead and putting the turning lanes in 192. It's going to be our property. I'm telling you right now, I am not going to vote to sell it, and I'm not going to vote to be dumping garbage on there either. It's our property. Worst-case scenario, you know, they're going to have to come up with something later, but I would love for that to be able to utilize still for the farm property that they're using, but it's ours, so I'm ready to hang on to it. The Florida recyclers, and I guess they're going to be coming to us with some information, but we haven't gotten all the data back on that. And there's some costs that we don't have in here. As far as you said, there's like a lot of mulch, and it's going to take like almost $1 million to remove the mulch, and there's costs for the drainage. So, we've got a lot of discussion moving forward. But Yuri, this is great, the information that you've put together for us so far. And I also have to commend you. Whenever I ask you a question, even if it's something you don't want to tell me, you tell me the truth and tell me. And I really appreciate that while we ran through cost per household of what we were looking at. So, I just want to be upfront with you guys of what I'm thinking, and I'm hoping we can come up with something very creative of what to do here, short-term and long-term. So, that's where I am.
Commissioner Loeb?
And I'll just add this. I'm going to make a couple folks in the room perhaps less than thrilled, but I'd rather just be direct than put my cards on the table with respect to where I am with things. Given that massive difference in the appraisals between the low and the high that we've got with Florida recyclers, the way I look at it, it kind of, I understand there's a difference between a landfill and other types of property, but we had a developer not too long ago, and I think we had an item actually on the agenda here not too long ago either, that was representing the owners of the property north of the Walmart on 520. And they had an appraisal, and we had an appraisal, and I talked with the broker who came into my office and said to him, and he's a real nice guy, I said to him, "Look", I said, "You know, your appraisal is just way out of line. There's some issues with it that staff's identified. I can go through them if you want, but the bottom line is, you know, I'm not going to support it if you expect us to go with your appraisal, which is substantially higher, and which we have several reasons to fault." The fact that the county's next least-expensive alternative was far more expensive than the difference in appraisal was brought up, and I said, "Listen", I said, "I'd rather spend $2 million bucks more and not spend an extra quarter of a million, because I have a concern that the precedent that this sets, that the county will pay essentially whatever it takes, way over and above market value, is not something that I want to set." So, with respect to this, I have the same concern, that even if our next least-expensive alternative is substantially more than the difference in the appraisal cost, I'd still rather spend much more and not set a precedent that the county is willing to pay whatever on an item-by-item basis, because I think that's a bad trend and a bad precedent to set in the long run. And looking at something where we have two appraisals, what I did with the last one is I said, "Look", I said, "The most I could even conceivably get behind is splitting the difference between the two appraisals." Now, I'm not saying that this is identical to that, but that, at least at first blush, my inclination is something that would be a good starting point for discussion, not to even say that this is where I'd be at, or that we're at a point where I'd be comfortable with any number at this point. But you split the difference, and then you take out the cost to remove the mulch. Maybe that's something to look at as far as a starting point. I don't know, but I just want to put that out there, that I'm not comfortable with a higher appraisal with this. And even if we have to spend more, I would happily spend a couple million more, not to set the precedent that, "Well, it's going to, you know, the county's in a bad spot, so we're going to, you know, we're essentially going to, you know, get a sweet deal because the county has no choice. I'll spend more and take a harder choice if need be to avoid that precedent."
Commissioner Tobias?
Yes, Madam Chair. And this is just a question for Yuri. That delta of $3 million between the appraisal of the owners and the appraisal we procured, that assumes that there is, because we haven't received back the environmental study. Is that, is that true?
That's correct. That's the missing piece.
So, just to understand, is that missing piece, is there any way that that could, missing piece could make those two numbers, that delta smaller, or is it my understanding that good news would leave it where it is, bad news would only make that delta grow? In other words?
That's correct.
Okay.
Because we definitely do not want to buy, I'm not saying that they are, but in any situation, we, the county normally doesn't buy land that's contaminated with having, their eyes wide open, knowing, and that goes, that gets factored into any price that anybody buys.
And how about, Commissioner Loeb has been pretty salient on where he stands, that that $3 million is too large. When will we know how much larger that $3 million is? When will we get that study back?
They're supposed to be doing the drilling on, I believe, the 10th or 11th of November, and probably within 20 days after that, we will get a report.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, is this our consultant doing the drilling? Is this our consultant that we've used in the past?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I think, you know, and I'm not attacking anybody, just so we're clear, aside from the fact that 30 years ago, when we started this process with 192, the sky was falling on Sarno. Now, I know we've changed some things, and we've got some extensions and some expansions, but that's what initiated this whole 192 project. And as far as cost, Commissioner Tobias, we've spent millions fighting Deseret in order to put this landfill out here on 192. And I think it'll probably be mentioned because American recyclers, obviously, is looking out for their best interests, which, like any business, is great. But you sort of like, were like a shining star for me, because here I didn't want 192, and here was this opportunity for this land that came much later, because this is an issue I've been following, following for a very long time, and even more so when Commissioner Anderson got in office. But, I mean, Deseret Ranch, you know, I know they finally gave up, you know, because they were worried they were going to have three types of trash out there. But if anybody in this room thinks that putting a new footprint of a landfill is not even remotely risky, I don't care what kind of liners you put in, I don't care what kind of safety precautions you put in, but within 2 miles of the St. John, and we talk about environmental impacts, and we talk about water quality, it's insane to me. We sign this permit, and it starts the ball rolling. It wants, it's almost like the county's been on this mission, and I'm not picking on Yuri, I'm not. He's a fine man. But it's almost like this county's been on this mission to win, and this mission to build this landfill, instead of looking for every other possibility not to do this. And I know this commissioner has heard me, this commission has heard me rant about it several times, and I apologize for that, but for those who haven't, I mean, this is why I'm so passionate about it. Let's drive it to Brevard County. Oh, you'll know you're inside Brevard County when you're coming down 192 and you see the landfill. Now, maybe a couple of, you know, 100 yards or even a mile from the road, you're still going to see it. You see it in other cities, and there's no way you You see it in other cities, and there's no way you can do away completely with the smell, because it will be a class, it'll be all three classes of trash there by the time they're done, whether they wait 10 years after they do the construction waste. We should be doing, instead of trying to push this 192 like we have been doing for all these years, and spending all these millions of dollars, and devaluing the future of all that property around it, like Commissioner Lober said, we should be doing everything we can not to put another landfill in our county. So, that's just my two cents before, it's hard being the chair, because people ask questions, and I say, "Oh, I gotta ask that, or I have to..." But, again, we started this 30 years ago, because the sky was falling, and if there's any way we can use that American recyclers' property, we should be doing it. Doesn't mean that we agreed to let them take advantage of us on the sale, because I don't think anybody up here would allow for that. But if there's another option, I mean, that's already permitted. I don't know. I don't know, it's unfortunate for Deseret Ranch, I mean, they're a nice, I mean, they're a business, they have all those cattle, and they run a business out there, but I think they're, they were, oh, I don't wanna say they were naive like years ago, but I think that they should've fought a lot harder. But I'm sure they were tired of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars fighting the county too, because how do you fight government, right? But I'll fight this till the end, and if it comes down to it, and this board votes to sign that, I won't even be the one to sign it, Commissioner Lober will have to be, because I think it's disgusting that we are not doing everything within our power. You know the technology's close anyway. I mean, I don't know. Again, I'm sorry. I get a little excited when I talk about this topic. So, I have some people, some cards here, I'm gonna take five minutes if that's alright, so my head doesn't explode. Thanks.